Good morning. Today is the 16th day of January, the time is 10 o'clock. The Board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Daley and I myself are present. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, we have, at first, we have a, an employee recognition. I'm going to ask Commissioner Daley if you'd read the employee recognition. We'll do that, you've got, we'll do that right now, so go ahead.
This is for Jerry Hastings, 20-year recognition. Jerry Hastings, a graduate of Notice High School, started his survey career in 1977, after running trenches, plows, and backhoes to install cables for the Mountain Bell Telephone Company, and after attending the College of Idaho and Boise State University. Jerry obtained his land survey training certificate, number S-55, in 1982, and his professional land surveying license, number L-5359, in 1986. In 1986, Jerry was the construction supervisor for the Lucky Peak Power Plant Project, which started his work in the private sector. Over the next two decades, Jerry worked in the private sector for various private engineering and survey firms, including Treasure Valley Engineering, JUB Engineering, Roy Lance &amp; Associates, and Inland Engineering Company. He also ran his own survey company, surveying company, for a while. In 2004, Jerry brought his expertise through the public sector when he joined Ada County Development Services as Assistant County Surveyor. His dedication and technical skills quickly led to his promotion to Ada County Surveyor in November 2007, a position he has excellently maintained for the past 16 years. Throughout his career, Jerry has been involved in numerous projects, including the retracing, surveying, and re-monumenting of the Ada County boundary with Boise County, last done in 1883, collaborating with BLM to re-monument initial point, the starting point for all surveyors, surveys, in Idaho, and the signing of around 700 subdivision plats. He has served as a deputy clerk recorder, assisted in establishing, establishing survey benchmarks for the area, and held leadership positions in the Idaho Society of Professional Land Surveyors, including president, section director, and legislative committee member. Jerry is a distinguished surveyor, whose unwavering dedication has left a lasting impact on our community and the citizens we serve. Please join us in acknowledging Jerry for his achievements, the impact he has made in this field of survey in Idaho, and for his 20 years of dedicated service to Ada County.
Okay, is there anybody here that likes to speak in Jerry's behalf? Oh, yeah, Richard wants to, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley, we'll note for the record, Jerry should be here any moment. He will have to tune in, I guess, online to...
To hear what we actually said.
Hear what you said, I guess I'll just add a few remarks if that's acceptable. You know, as, as you read that synopsis and summary, I had, I, I kind of thought back to, back to 2005, when I joined the county as a young, a young planner. Jerry became the, the individual that we as planners would go to when we had our surveying and subdivision plaque questions. And I don't know why his boss at the time seemed kind of scary, which probably wasn't the case, but I recall, you know, being very appreciative of Jerry being willing to set aside his work and just patiently walk me through, very thoroughly, through my, my concerns. And then thinking about the, the 700-plus subdivision plats that Jerry's processed over the last 20 years, I couldn't help but wonder just how many of us here in this room today, or those watching online, have essentially indirectly been benefited by Jerry's work, especially those who, specifically those who have purchased a property in Ada County. I just appreciate his dedication over the last 20 years in developing and maintaining a very high level of professionalism and standards, and balancing those in the face of sometimes intense development pressure from, from the development community outside, especially when times were busy and they were hoping their subdivision plats could be processed as fast as possible. Appreciate him on such an important topic in watching out for the, the citizens and the public good. And, I don't know if he's shown up yet, but Jerry, if you're watching this, just appreciate, appreciate your professionalism and all that you've, you've dedicated to Ada County and, and the service that you've provided to citizens. Thanks.
All right. Anyone else wants to speak in behalf of Jerry? Oh, here's one, Zach.
Just, just a couple of things about Jerry. I really appreciate his, like Richard mentioned, his professionalism, and then also his kind of track on history and surveying and how things morph. One of the first times I met him, he mentioned a surveyor, their name, and then a number. So, Bob Smith, 5456. And I was like, what is that number? That was their license number. So he's tracking kind of the surveying history and where certain surveyors fall in that history of surveying. And then I appreciated some, there were times where there would be a discrepancy or question over a certain property corner, surveyors discussing how to measure things and arguing over measurements. And I always appreciated Jerry would just call those surveyors, three or four of them, and talk about how to resolve that one property corner. Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you. There's Jerry. Jerry, anybody else want to speak? You don't need to say anything if you don't want to, go ahead.
Thank you very much for the privilege of being here. It's been a really good 20 years. I'll enjoy it for a few more.
Well, come on down, we'll, we'll give you, give you a plaque.
Mr. Chairman, since he's here, your, your next, your next position will be president then, because our, our first president, George Washington, was a surveyor initially, so...
All right. Thank you. If you have anybody you want to stand with, if, that's fine, if you don't, we'll just take a picture, over here in the front. You lead the way. All right there in the front, so we get, sure we get the light and background, whatnot. And we got our photographer here from HR. Come on down. Well, Jerry, on behalf of the Citizens of Ada County, we present this plaque to you for 20 years of dedicated service. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, moving on, we have unfinished business. We have a, a resolution that was tableed till today, so we'll need a, a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Mr. Chairman, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 The first item is a, a resolution, we need to open a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing on Resolution Number 2947, a resolution adjusting the Ada County budget to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenue in the public, to the public defender's budget. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this resolution? Okay, there we go. We have our public defender.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. This financial assistance that we get from the Public Defense Commission, from the state, essentially allows us to hire seven additional attorneys, two legal assistants, and one investigator. We also do quite a bit of training, skills courses, trial skills, courses that we send our attorneys to, et cetera. The money is instrumental in, in what we do, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, any questions? We'll have a read through it, and we appreciate the state providing a little bit of assistance to our Public Defense Office as it's in its sunset.
Mr. Chairman, the, the total amount this year, I think, was about 1.58 million.
Right. All right, well, thank you. Okay, with that, is there any, any, any more questions or anything? I will close the public hearing on Resolution Number 2947, and it's, so it's up to the Board. Is there any questions or, or any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 2947 as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item of unfinished business is application number 2023101909ZCDASMSB and 200600071DM, PEG companies. This was held at a public hearing on Wednesday at last, and all testimony was taken, the hearing was closed, and so it's property before the Board, now for discussion and/or agreement. Is there, does anybody want to kick off the discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, based on the information that I've reviewed, because we did have lots of information, several hearings on this, I would, my inclination is to actually table this to a, a date certain, maybe four months from now, so that we can actually have the opportunity to consider more, more, more mixed use on this property.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, we, we've, we definitely had a long hearing on this last week, might have been a record for how long we were here late into the evening. We did hear from, I would say dozens of residents about the project, and there are obviously still pretty, pretty sincere concerns with this potential for rezone. From, from my perspective, if, you know, if a, a company is looking for the special privilege of getting an area rezoned, then I think that we, we have to take the neighbors into consideration when we make that decision. So it seemed like the neighbors were pretty universally against the proposal. So I think it, it could be appropriate to allow the developer to try to submit something else that, that may be more appropriate for that area.
Okay, is there a motion?
So there...
Yeah, let's, Richard, is there a date, maybe four months in the future, that might work?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we would potentially recommend that this be slated for a backup hearing to, to provide adequate time to consider the, the request. We've got April 24th as an option, or May 22nd as an option. Those are both backup hearings.
Okay. All right, well, I think we need, you give this plenty of time, how about May 22nd?
That's what I was just going to say as well.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table application number 202301901ZCDASMS and 200600071DM, PEG companies, to May 22nd hearing, based on giving them additional time for mixed use consideration.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say it.
Discuss a little bit more?
Sure, discuss it, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just to, you know, obviously for the record, this was the second time that PEG had been in front of the Board. They started with one proposal, and we suggested that they come back with some more mixed use, which they did, I think to their credit. However, once again, that, that proposal was really not favorably received by, by the neighborhood. So I am hoping that something, some kind of solution can be reached if, if we give this extension, which really means that PEG doesn't have to start from scratch, doesn't have to go through the application process again. I realize that based on the testimony we heard last week, that there, there may not be anything that will please the neighborhood, so I, again, we, we obviously express no opinion on what may be proposed in the future, or if anything's proposed in the future. But I think we, we did get, we, we, we did hear very loudly from the neighborhood what they would support. It doesn't necessarily mean that our decision would be based 100% on neighborhood support. I just, I, anyways, so I, I think we, we did take the temperature. I, I do hope PEG could come back with something that the neighborhood will support, although that, again, may not be possible based on what we heard, so I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
Any other discussion? All right, no other discussion, so you've heard the motion, to table this application until 5:22. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have a couple of resolutions. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution Number 2948, a resolution for procurement of contractor services on the open market for the Ada County Juvenile Services walk-in cooler replacement. Well, we didn't defend anybody, did we? All right, the resolution is open, is there discussion on this, on this resolution? Hearing no discussion, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2948. And any discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve Resolution 2948 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll, next up is Resolu, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2949, a resolution for, for procurement of contractor services on the open market for the Ada County Community Program's exterior storefront window replacement. Is there anyone here to discuss this? Anyone from Ops or anything? Nope. Any discussion amongst the Board? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 2950 as listed on the agenda.
29...
2949.
2949.
I second the, uh, I second the motion.
Okay. All right, you've heard the motion, any discussion? Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up is, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution Number 2950, an ARPA Resolution Number 36 for the use of allowable expenditures and return of unspent related, funds related to the American Rescue Plan, Plan Act Fund Budget. Now, I know we have Dawn here, she's got to say something about this.
Stay here, you want me to come up there?
You do whatever you feel more comfortable. Okay, we can hear you.
For the microphone, probably.
Yeah, the clerk is saying, he said, come to the microphone for purpose of the record here.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
Okay.
So this is for a, an aquifer recharge model for the Hubbard reservoir in the amount of $54,000, and then we're also closing a premium pay project for our juvenile services. And that's it, any questions?
I don't have any questions. Does the Board have any questions? All right, well, thank you. I'll accept the motion on, on, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2950 and accept the motion.
I move to approve Resolution 2950 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2951, a resolution for the extension of temporary employee referral and recruitment incentive program for recruitment of Ada County employees. And we, we, we have, we have Beth who wants to talk about it for a bit.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you, just, this is another extension of the program. It's been incredibly helpful for us and for all departments and offices in their efforts for recruitment. The program thus far, 96 total, we've retained 84 of those individuals, so 88% retention on our referrals. In 2023, it's been 57 paid, seven are pending, just completing the required time period of working here at Ada County. I signed off on one this morning for a hot job that's been super hard to fill, and so HR greatly appreciates this and know that all of our offices have, virtually all have benefited from it, and ask for your continuance of the program.
Okay, and we are authorizing a continuance for how long?
Through the end of March.
Through the end of March, all right. Okay, any other discussion? Any questions? Okay, I'll accept a, a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve Resolutions 2950 and 2951 as listed on the agenda? Or is it just 51?
We already did 51.
Sorry, just 51.
51, right.
Just 51, right? All right, is there a second to the motion to, to approve Resolution Number 2951?
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to procurement. Well, hello there.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Before you this morning, we have a opening of Bid 24024, the Courthouse 2nd, 4th, 5th Floor Judges' Chambers Carpet Replacement 2024, and procurement received three responses for this project, and if you're ready for us to open, Noah's got our, our Bonfire E procurement system queued up.
Okay.
All right, let's open them up.
Are these going to be real special carpets?
Yes, they are.
All right, thank you.
So today, Mr. Chairman, we're looking for the name of the bidder, the total bid amount, and there'll be a spreadsheet that'll be popping up on the screen here in just a second, and we'll read those into the record.
Okay.
Oh, it's just the data slot today? Okay, all right, so our first bidder is Ace Quality Finish LLC, and they have a bid amount of $223,000. Our second bidder is Great Floors, and they have a bid amount of $99,990. And then our third and final bidder is Wall-to-Wall Commercial Flooring, and they have a total bid amount of $96,819. So those are our three bidders, and... So those are our three bidders, and, uh, we will need a little time to review these bids, make sure that they've complied with administrative requirements. And we've requested this be tabled for award to our January 23rd, 2024 Open Business Meeting.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, Mr. Chair, um, this, you know, in light of our our jail bond that recently failed, we're looking for any additional money to to look at the jail upgrades. This project always, you know, kind of strikes me as one that maybe we should give a second look about whether, how desperate the need is for new carpet. It is a substantial expense, but I'm just wondering about even tabling this one to maybe have Ops give a review about whether this is absolutely needed this year, or whether this could be, uh, held off, um, in light of the the need for additional funding for the jail.
Uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, uh, we do have, uh, Ops here today, but it's my understanding that the carpet up there is from the original, um, carpet that was placed in here 27 years ago when the courthouse was built. But anybody from Ops want to address?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, yeah, we do. So we go through a process when we look at carpet replacement. Is it old? Is it wearing? Is it fraying? Is it buckling? Uh, those kind of, those kind of things. And then develop a priority list. And so this is one of the ones that come up, uh, on our list for this year as a need to get to get replaced. So, um, in our opinion, it is something that should be done, um, at this time. That's why we put together the the proposals to go out to bid, uh, and try to replace it. So I would recommend that we try to move forward with this project if we can. Um, you know, we're not going through and just replacing carpet, um, you know, just because there is a process that goes into place with it as well, so.
So it fits in the rotation of carpet replacement?
Fits in our carpet repla- carpet replacement rotation. It is, it is original to the building. Uh, like I said, we look for sagging, wearing, uh, you need to start to get glue that delaminates, uh, between the carpet layer, uh, and and the concrete and areas. And so we look for all of those things when we do these projects.
Okay.
All right. Well, I guess I would say, I know, obviously, we have a lot of projects that are in rotation, uh, that just come up every, each year as matter of course. Uh, however, I'm still wondering if maybe we shouldn't take a second or third look at at some of these projects to see if they could be, uh, held off for a year or two.
Well, that is something to consider. Is there a motion?
But now we're just going to be tabling it for your review of these bids, correct?
Uh, that is correct. So we we will, uh, be back before you, uh, on what's recommended is January 23rd, 2024, for a final award consideration.
23rd.
Yeah.
Well, we can, we can examine the, uh.
We can address, uh, Commissioner Davidson's, the, at this point, you're just reviewing them for the potential award.
Yeah, we're just reviewing, uh, the bids as they came in, and then, um, based on how those bids come in, come back on January 23rd, make a recommendation at that point, and the board can decide what they want to do at that point.
At that point.
Okay.
So therefore, I I move to table the award of bid 24024 courthouse second, fourth, fifth floor judges' chambers carpet replacement to January 23rd, 2024.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay. Um, I'd be interested to see why the delta is so large in the bid, but I guess, I guess you'll figure that out.
All right, one of the things you're gonna review, correct?
That is, that is correct. Just to note, though, uh, we do have two carpet, uh, um, vendors up there and one general contractor, so that's probably the reason why the other one's so high.
Okay, well, well, okay, fine. All right, you've heard the motion to, uh, uh, table this bid till, uh, 1/23, January 23rd, give you a chance to review the bids and make a recommendation. All right. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Okay, uh, next up, we have operations change order number one, Ada County Landfill North Ravine Cell Stage Agreement Number 15144, change the final completion date, no change to cost.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, good morning. Uh, this landfill NRC four project was scheduled to come to a completion this month. As you know, uh, we got inundated with snow, and there's a blanket of snow covering the entire, uh, floor of the landfill, uh, that was scheduled to be turned over. And additionally, uh, there's a lot of rain sheeting that's getting installed on the the major slopes of the landfill. Uh, they're unable to complete that, uh, due to the weather. Uh, once again, no cost to the county. We're just, uh, asking to extend the completion time to April. Um, and I stand for questions.
Okay, any questions?
So there's not gonna be any negative impact, environmental impact, correct?
Uh, good question, Mr. Daly. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the Department of Environmental Quality has the final review package in their court. Uh, they'll be reviewing the engineer's report. Uh, the engineers did make it very clear that they can't finalize that report until the snow melts and they can get a good look at the final, uh, product. Uh, it was just bad timing, right? They were wrapping up everything, all the tie-ins, and that snow started flying. Uh, so Commissioner Daly, there's one final report that's out to the DEQ, and we are waiting on that final review, uh, to turn over the landfill. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve change order number one, Ada County Landfill North Ravine Cell Stage Four as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have change order number 13, Ada County Coroner's Office Replacement Facility Project Agreement Number, to Agreement Number 14570, increased to 200, uh, $200,000. Is there discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, uh, the Coroner's Office, as it's nearing completion, we, uh, turn on all the equipment, uh, we get the commissioning agents out there and the, uh, mechanical engineers and testing and balancing groups to, uh, make sure that everything is functioning correctly. Uh, as we were commissioning the units, we noticed, and and it was reported back to us, that, uh, there were some sizing issues with the, uh, chill beam system, specifically expansion tanks and pumps that pump the water throughout the system. Uh, we had to reevaluate, uh, that design. Uh, we had to, um, upsize some components, and those components have substantial lead times and substantial costs associated with them. Uh, unfortunately, the leftover contingency that we had in place didn't cover those costs. Um, so we're asking today to ex- to extend that contingency for an additional $200,000. Uh, I want to note that the $200,000 is already in the budget that was appropriated for the Coroner's Office. We're just moving money from one line over to the construction contract to, uh, to fund that contingency.
Okay. Any other questions? So this means, uh, that this, that the building will actually be complete. We will get our certificate of occupancy sometime this year.
Yes, sir. Uh, as you, that's a great question, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. We also asked, uh, to extend the date of the project to April 1st. Um, I'm sure that that's noted on the change order as well. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve change order number, excuse me, 13, Ada County Coroner's Office Replacement Facility Project as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Any just further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have licenses, uh, four catering permits and two new licenses. Is there any discussion or a motion? I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to, um, approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including four catering permits and two new licenses, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next up is the clerk's office. We're gonna expect a detailed report from the clerk's office.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Um, I just have two brief follow-up items to what I reported last week. The first being, as I, um, told you last week, Trent was at a conference in Washington, DC. He has back to this end of the country. Um, he will be back in the office tomorrow afternoon, so we're excited for him to get back. Um, and then the second was I indicated that we were hoping our audit would be completed at the end of last week. Um, I had Bailey has asked for just a little bit more time to review our information, so we're hoping to hear more from them next week. So those are, that's all I got for you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Okay, uh, next up, we have the Claims Journal. I'll accept the motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to authorize payment of the claims on the Claims Journal dated January 12th, 2024.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have Personnel Actions. I'll accept the motion on the Personnel Actions.
I move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
I second the motion.
Okay, uh, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have the Assessor's Office. Oh, there we go.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
You got a detailed report for us?
Yeah, so our appraisers have changed gears, who have finished our, finished our 20% reappraisal for the year. So now they're working on land values, and, um, so they'll be working on those for the next couple of months. And then, um, Board of Tax Appeals, uh, we have our final hearing this Thursday, which is the Albertsons headquarters down on Park Center. And then we're just starting to get decisions back, and we've had three that just came in last week, and all three were affirmed as far as what the BOE decision was. So we're feeling pretty good about that. So in regards to tax cancellations, we have 114 on the agenda today, and those are from House Bill 562, and these are prorated exemptions that came in after the property rule closed.
Okay. Looks like there's a number of them here.
Yeah, I believe 114. And this is our last big push. This is basically for the, for last year. So once we roll into the new year, any adjustments would be made on the property rule. So these next five, six months, it'll be pretty slow on the tax cancellations.
Okay, and I think it should be noted that while we call it tax cancellations, they're not cancellations, they're, they're adjustments.
That is correct.
Okay.
Do you remember what the three cases were that the decision came out on?
Yeah, so one was the adjustment that you made on the river, which I believe we had the land value of 500,000, and you made the adjustment down to 450,000. Do you recall that one? It was the, it was an improved house, and they didn't have visibility of the river. And it was kind of an interesting concept because you had the array of land values, and I thought you made a really good decision, and so did, uh, Board of Tax Appeals, because after, uh, that was our very first appeal that came in, and it was our first hearing, and they validated that the 450,000 was accurate and, uh, based on, based on the information provided. And then the other one was the farm that was out on, uh, Locust Grove. The couple came in and had some complaints about the agricultural exemption and their home site and their house out there, uh, some of the noise because of the, uh, properties around them. And those, both, both parcels were affirmed, which means, uh, no adjustments on those. So, but, and I can, I can keep you informed as we get the decisions back.
All right.
On those, so.
And you said, how many were left?
You said? Oh, we only have one hearing left this Thursday, and that's the Albertsons. So now we'll be completed, and then we'll just be, they'll start trickling in. They have up until May 1st to make their decision. The Board of Tax Appeals does, so.
Can they adjust upwards or downwards, or do they only consider what the applicant said?
They can, and we've gotten there where, uh, we've actually argued for a higher value, uh, not very often, but we have done that. Uh, Board of Tax Appeals, at least within Ada County, during my timeframe, has never increased values, but they, they have mentioned that in hearings where the data really supported a higher value, uh, the hearing officer has mentioned that they have the ability to increase the value, too.
So there's some risk going to appeal, that you could end up worse than you were in front of this board?
You could.
All right. Well, thank you, Brad. Is there, uh, any other discussion on the, uh, tax cancellation? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Uh, before I make the motion, I'll just reiterate what you said. These are not cancellations, they're adjustments. But I move to approve the tax cancellations, that term used under the law, as listed on the agenda, which includes one tax cancellation for 2021, one tax cancellation for 2022, and 112 tax cancellations for 2023, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have our distinguished treasurer with us. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Um, I'll start with the tax cancellations or adjustments which you've just approved. Um, as you're aware, the 2023 tax bills did include property tax credits. So with any tax adjustment that we're processing, we're also processing a credit adjustment. So I say that just to note that these are taking a little bit longer for us to process than they have in prior years, um, but it is a priority for us to, um, process these. Um, I'll also note that the treasurer's office is mailing two notices this week. Um, one are, is the delinquent notices. Those are for the primary tax bills that were due back on December 20th. So those will be hit in mailboxes this week. We are also sending our subsequent, subsequent roll tax bills. So those are for properties that were assessed between, um, the end of May through October. So that would include new construction that is completed and then occupied. Um, so it's a really small roll, I think maybe 2,000 parcels, but just a heads up that those tax bills are going to be mailed this week also, and the first half of those bills, um, will be due February 20th. So if you get, receive calls with all these mailings coming out, um, feel free to forward them to us.
Okay. Any, any, anything, uh, from the commission? Any questions or anything? All right, well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have, uh, Development Services with, uh, uh, Final Plaid.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, just please present the final plaid of Rustler Subdivision. This is a two-lot residential subdivision. They're taking 10 acres with a house and creating a second lot. Staff has reviewed the final plaid, finds that the developer's been able to comply with all applicable conditions of approval, and that the plaid complies with county code, and we recommend that the board authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plaid.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to, uh, approve application number 202101744-dash-S Rustler Subdivision, and authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plaid on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, any discussion? You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes for Open Business Meeting for 1-224 and, uh, 1-924. And Indigent Services, General and Executive Session.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have, uh, Barber Park and, uh, Education and Event Center for Events. I'll accept a motion on those four events.
I'll move to approve the four Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And next up, we have seven agreements. Is there any discussion or, uh, any, uh, questions about the, any of the agreements?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
See, there's a, there's another agreement for more carpet. This one's at the Barrister Campus, and so I'll just bring up my same point I made during the previous discussion. I'm wondering about maybe tabling this one until we could have more of a public discussion about whether or not we should look at diverting money from nonessential projects to the jail fund.
Okay, any other discussion or question?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so for the Barrister Campus carpet, the carpet's actually worn down to where we're seeing back here, the backing for the carpet to come through. It is original to the building, and we do have asbestos in several areas as well, which is why we're moving to change the carpet out there at that location.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So you said there's asbestos under the carpet?
Yeah, there's typically asbestos in the glue when it's that old. The carpet's original to the building, so I would assume back in the 70s. And like I said, we're wearing down to where the backer started to show through in the carpet, so all different areas. And so that's, this is one of the ones that were probably pushed off, pushed off for way too long before it was replaced, and so now we're in a pot, spot where we do need to replace it, we do need to mitigate the asbestos glue that's underneath the carpet as well.
That's what I was just gonna say, so we have mitigation now as well.
That is part of, part of this agreement, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, all right, well, is there a motion?
I move to approve the seven agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
All right, is there a second motion?
Well, if you're gonna bring up asbestos, okay, I'll second that one.
Yeah, asbestos is bad. Okay, you've heard the, the, the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have one more item on our agenda, that is the Indigent Services, the weekly indigent items. Is there a motion?
I'll move to accept the recommendations of the Indigent Services staff as listed in the summary of cases dated January 16th, 2024, and authorize the Chair to sign documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other business needs to be brought before the Board? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Good morning. Today is the 16th day of January, the time is 10:51. The, uh, the Board is in session acting as the Emergency Medical Services District Open Business Meeting. All three Commissioners are present. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, no change to the agenda, we have, first up, we have a couple of employee recognitions. I'll ask Commissioner Davidson to read the first one.
All right, well, the first one is for Steve Cole. Where's Steve? Is he here today? There he is, okay. All right, and this is for a big one, 25 years of service to Ada County. Steve Cole grew up in Lexington, Kentucky, and received his high school diploma from Millersburg Military Institute. He joined the Army shortly thereafter and served as a medic with Fort Campbell EMS until July 1995. Steve began his EMS career in the Army and attended Volunteer State Community College, where he received his paramedic license in Tennessee. Steve worked for a few county agencies in Tennessee before coming to Ada County on December 7th, 1998. Steve has held a variety of positions with Ada County paramedics. He has worked as a field paramedic, field training officer, assistant supervisor, quality assurance coordinator, and his current role of training captain. Steve has also earned his master's degree in education from Eastern Kentucky University. He has been instrumental in the development of many training programs here at Ada County paramedics and within the access system. It has been an absolute pleasure working with Steve over the years and watching him develop his skills as a practitioner, teacher, and mentor. Thank you, Steve, for 25 years of exceptional service to the citizens of Ada County.
Anybody who wants to say anything in behalf of Steve?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to say something.
All right, go ahead.
You know, Steve and I actually served together in the Army. Uh, I think I've only, I've known my wife maybe a year longer than I've known Steve, so, uh, you know, I can't say enough about how proud I am to have been able to serve with him all this time and just watching him grow. Steve's very dedicated to the, and, you know, has just been one of those stalwarts with our agency, and, you know, I wish I was there today to give him a big bear hug, because I knew he'd love that, but here we are, so, thank you, Steve.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to say anything in behalf of Steve? Okay, thank you. We will, uh, go through the next one, and then we'll come down and take a couple of pictures. Okay. Uh, the next one's Chris Irman, is Chris here? Hey, Chris, pan up, all right. Chris Irman is a humorous force to be reckoned with at Ada County Paramedics. When he started, his intellect, his self-deprecating humor, and his love of puns and crossword puzzles were immediately apparent, as were his raw smarts. He was a quick study of EMS and rapidly distinguished himself as a leader with very specific ideas about how leadership could be better, could be done better. Chris has had a variety of jobs over the years, including advanced EMT paramedic, special operations team member, education captain, and field captain. All this experience is now being used in Chris's current and most difficult role as a battalion chief. Mix in Chief Irman's leadership experience with the U.S. Navy, and it's easy to see how and why he is so successful. We are fortunate to have Chief Irman leading our medics and EMTs. Not only do our providers benefit, so too does our department, partners, and community. Thanks very much, Chief Irman, for 20 years of service. Okay, anyone wish to say anything on Chris's behalf? Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, about Chris and about Paramedic Cole, I am, I continue to be impressed by folks that make it through this deep into an EMS career, given the difficulties of the job. It wears on you, a job like this does wear, and so by the time you've gotten to 20 or 25 years, you've had some tremendous highs and successes, and there are a number of times when this job really grinds on a person, and, and there are a number of, of low points. After you've been through 20 or 25 years, there are a number of those low points, and to persevere during those times and continue to be successful and come to this point in your career is a significant thing. I continue to be impressed by that, and I'm appreciative.
Thank you. Thank you, is there anyone else who wants to say anything in behalf of Chris?
Why don't we have Chris and Steve come up to the mic and give us a few words of wisdom? I know we'd all love to hear from you men, right?
Yes, your opportunity.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to run my mouth a little bit. Uh, my career has been definitely unique and has had ups and downs, but I, I tell, I'll tell you what I tell everybody. I came here for the medicine, but I stayed here for the people. And what I mean by that, I, in my job and in my other EMS, activities, I've traveled across the country and helped other EMS systems. I teach FTEP, I've been to Washington DC advocating on behalf of the profession in the education, I helped write the new education standard, stuff of that nature. And I am continually impressed when I come back from seeing these other organizations, how far we've gone and where we've been and where we're going. I came here literally because Ada County was doing things that other EMS agencies weren't, and as far as the clinical aspect, I wanted to come and do good medicine, I want to do cool stuff, and I've gotten to do that. But I've stayed because of people like Sean, my good buddy, because of people like Chris, because of my lovely wife back there, I do want to admit. And I, these are the best paramedics you'll find anywhere. And I, I would put our, our newest least performing medic would be a rock star in any other organization. I can't say that enough, our training tempo, the support we have, the commitment to not just operational excellence, clinical excellence, personal excellence, you just don't see it in this industry, and that's why I'm still here after 25 years. And I'm happy about being here, I'm not looking to leave as soon as I can, I'm, I'm, I'm not burned out, I love being here, so that's, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
And Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity, thank you for the recognition. It's been quite a 20 years, sometimes it seems like only yesterday I was young, knucklehead with more hair, just starting this out, and, uh, you know, I owe all of it really to, or most of it certainly, to mentors like Captain Cole. You know, I've learned a ton from him over the years. Deputy Chief Blake was my very first field training officer. We got through that together, I feel like, Chief. And, I mean, I just would echo what Captain Cole had to say. Also, in honor of this occasion, I have chosen to wear the very boots that were issued to me by the county 20 years ago, and I would point out that they are shinier than the boots of Steve Cole, because Earth's most powerful Navy is better than the Army.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I, I would just like to thank all of you, all of you here, especially these two that have obviously spent, spent many years of their life dedicated to this. This is one of those professions that people don't appreciate until they need it, and then they reappreciate it overwhelmingly, so thank you very much for staying with us.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
All right, come on down, we'll, uh, Steve, anybody else that wants to be in the photo? Come on down, we'll take a picture. Get over here.
Sir?
You don't bother, you didn't work any puns in here.
I wasn't sure. I was on the spot.
Would it be all right if we did one with just the Commissioners, and that'd be great?
All right, all right, go ahead.
Okay. One second, okay? In three, two, and one. Perfect.
All right, Steve, on behalf of Sycamore County, I'd like to present you with this recognition, your 25 years of dedicated service. Chris, on behalf of Sycamore County, I'd like to congratulate you on 20 years of dedicated service. Thank you.
Can we get the?
Yeah, anybody else wants to be in?
Their supporting cast? Just the wife, okay? All right, and looking right here, in three, two, and one. Okay, Chris?
Do you all want to just look at yourself? No, of course not.
Are you the lovely wife?
I am a lovely wife.
And three, two, and one. Perfect, thank you.
Well, thank you. Congratulations. Yes, for me here.
Thank you. Thank you for doing, like, the recognitions.
Thank you for all your service.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
I'm sure there's about 100 car accidents you guys are gonna need to get to this.
Let's hope not that many.
Yeah, let's hope not, yeah. All right, we're moving along, we have the Claims Journal. I'll accept a motion on the Claims Journal.
I'll move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated January 12th, 2024 regarding EMS expenditures.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, we have Personnel Actions.
I move to approve Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye? Next up, we have approval of the minutes of the Emergency Medical Services District for 1224 and 1924.
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have Agreement Number 15553, Master Service Agreement between Ada County Emergency Medical Services District and Seringan Network LLC for Internet and Phone Service.
I move to approve the one agreement listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we get our EMS update.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I believe Chief Rain has an update for you.
Okay, Chief Rain.
Is this Snowmageddon 2? Is that, uh, has this been a snowmageddon for, for your department?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, it has been interesting. You know, we, we've actually, I was gonna talk about this in my update, but we have a, a small team that looks at the weather on a daily basis to look at issues like, do we need to staff up for the next day? Which tomorrow is one of those days, because we're anticipating some snow overnight. But there is a chance that we could see some blacker, some ice storms. And, you know, those are typically where we tend to see more fall victims. So we've been watching that very closely. I do want to give some kudos to Bob Carney and his staff. They've done a really amazing job this year and half a year at getting out to our stations. You know, you get that much snow on the ground. We still have to get an ambulance out and back into a bay. So they've done a really good job of clearing snow and making sure that we've got snow melt down and people aren't slipping and falling at the station. So thanks to Bob and his staff for that. Outside of that, just kind of a reminder, EMS 101, that presentation we'll be doing in the Lincoln Auditorium on the 22nd at 3:30 a.m. We've been spending, oh, just about every day in the last week and a half just prepping for that. Tomorrow, we'll be finalizing our presentation, and then Friday afternoon, we're actually going to do a walk-through, and then we plan on being down at the State House at 1:30 on the 22nd, just to make sure that everything is working appropriately and everything is set up. Along with that, I'll be giving myself and Chief Hendrick with Meridian Fire, we'll be giving a funding presentation to the EMS Task Force this Friday. Just looking at all the different funding options that we've discussed, and on our committee, we actually have Commissioner Blair Dance from Leita County. He's been very helpful. We're looking at everything from levies to, you know, sin tax, excise taxes, local option taxes, you know, money from federal lands, pilt, you name it. I don't think we've left a stone unturned, but it's just a matter of trying to figure out what the legislature will actually be willing to adopt. The other tough thing is trying to pin down a number for the entire state of Idaho, and we've been working with Sarah Westbrook and some folks at the EMS Bureau of Idaho, figure out, you know, what's the true cost to provide EMS the way it should be provided across the state of Idaho, not just here in Ada County, so that we know what they're actually dealing with. So that's a, it's been a lot of work, but at least we're nearing the end on that. I don't really have an update on movement of the EMS Bureau. It sounds like the last I heard, they were looking at whether it would be this session or sometime this year of creating some sort of umbrella to put IOEM, the EMS Bureau, the Fire Marshal, Division of Hazmat, and Emergency Services Training, which is a statewide fire training agency under one umbrella, but I think they're still working through how that would even happen. So, but that's all I had today, unless you have any questions.
I don't have any questions. Any questions from the board? All right. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Well, unless there's anything else that this board needs to discuss, is there? Hearing none, we'll be adjourned. We're adjourned. Thank you all.